I'm jumping the gun. You got me wanting to go, Stevie.
Okay, three, two, one, all set.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Wednesday, February 22th, Park and Rec meeting. And we want to, first of all, go around and say who we are. My name is Jim O'Connor. I'm the chair.
Bill Nicoletti.
Debbie Davis.
Steve Bessbuda.
Chris Small.
Super awesome that we have Mr. Small here. We do not have a quorum. He is not the pinch hitter. He's actually a great guest. Mr. Lynch is taking the month off. He never, he never misses. I think maybe once or twice in the 22 years I've been here. So he's allowed that every once in a while. He deserves it. So, Chris, thank you for coming. You'll give us an update of what you do, of how you're doing and where we are with all the real stuff going on in the fields. So we'll start with, why don't, we can't vote on our minutes, but let's take a look at them. We don't want any motions. Let's just take a look at them. See if there's any changes we need so we could have, Deb could have it prepared for next month. I don't see any, any changes necessary. Bill, anything? Deb?
No.
Steve?
No.
Okay, so that's, we have, we don't have any public dialogue, but we do have a guest, the guests here will ask, yeah, Amity, we've, one of the thing, great things is, is we usually call in our youth presidents. And we have our Amity Youth, new youth president. He's going to come up and give us a rundown of what's going ahead. Give us a, just a State of the Union, if you could. Come on up. You could have right, you could stand right there, or you could join us. It's either one. It's pretty low key tonight, so it's up to you. Why don't you join us right here? So there's enough, enough seats.
Be at the table with us.
Very friendly.
Okay. So, welcome.
Good. How are you? I've never done this before, but I've been involved with Amity.
The light's going to turn green.
Yes. My name's Stephon Gildea. And I'm actually the V, yeah, S.T.E.F.A.N. Last name is G.I.L.D.E.A. Yep.
Super welcome.
Thank you for having me. I am the VP, actually, of Amity Youth Lacrosse. I've been involved in the program for about seven years now, roughly six years. And I remember Mr. O'Connor over here being, leading the charge with Mr. Coughlin and Pretlove over there.
Back in the day.
And then I worked with John Costanzo the last several years with the program, along with Janine Capasilantro and Carly Costanzo. And then they graduated out of the program. And now this is my last year with the program, but I'm vested in it. And I've always had a passion for the sport. So I've tried to translate my passion and channel it into this organization as best as I can.
That's super awesome. And thank you. It's, yeah, it's, it takes a lot to not only volunteer as a coach, but also to be on the executive board. It's tough. It's not easy. So we appreciate it.
Thank you. Definitely takes its time, but it's, it's well worth it. And I wanted to rest assured that I knew that after my last year here, that it continues to be the program that I knew it to be and I joined. You guys did a great job managing it prior. John did a wonderful job. And I mean, the sport within our community is growing at a tremendous rate. It really is. A lot of it has to do with the success of the high school, obviously. When you see a successful program ahead of you, it's easier for kids to get on that bandwagon and really kind of embrace it and want to play the sport. So with that said, I guess I'll just kind of give you guys a little bit of information. We are currently up to about 140 players in our league. This year, our bantams, which is our introduction level of lacrosse. We have, I think, Janine, do we have these numbers here in the bantams here? Okay, yep. So we have about 30 bantams this year, 26 to be exact, but I think there may be one or two coming in. And that's tremendous for our introduction level of our program. I mean, there is such interest in it. We have, we obtained a great guy from the community, this gentleman Jay Seedorf, who's an ex-military veteran. So he comes and brings his organization and his, what's, he's very, very relaxed about it, but very stern. And the kids get it. So it works. And he has a couple of other coaches that he brought in. We actually have another coach who's coaching that, who, one of your, one of your guys, I believe, initially, Owen.
Owen Weaver.
So Owen Weaver is one of the coaches and soon to be joining our board is the intention. He's also an attorney from the area. Lives in Orange. Went through Amity High School, played on the very first Amity High School lacrosse team.
You did. He was one of my captains.
Yep. So he's a great guy and we're happy to have him join the board. So I know that once I graduate out, there's obviously a nice bloodline coming up. Guys who really care about the sport. And that's the most important thing to us. So with that said, I guess, do I address any of my concerns?
Yeah, your thoughts?
Okay.
This is your, what we try to, so, so you know, this is a really.
I'm sorry.
This is an opportunity for the State of the Union of where you think the organization is to give us updates, in kinds, thoughts of how we can improve it, what's going well, that you feel comfortable on camera talking about, things like that.
Sure.
Really just, you know, it's, it's us just to get connected with you so that the town stays involved in it and we get the word out there on our organizations.
Great. Okay. All right. So I guess where I will start is, one of the things I would like to discuss while I'm here, and one of the main reasons why I came here initially, was we have time that we use and we practice within our organization at Fred Wolf Park. Excuse me, let me just shut my phone off here. I don't want anybody to disturb or bother me. So Fred Wolf Park has, we love it. It's a great place. We're really happy that the town allows us this, I can't even get this thing on, us to use the, the fields, but it's been slightly volatile and difficult to try to organize and get fair field time with the other program that's using it, which is the Amity Girls Lacrosse Program. Now, there were separate programs, in case everybody, in case, and nobody's aware of this, okay? But I have a vested interest in both of them. I have a daughter that plays for the program. And I have a son who plays in the, the Boys' Youth Program. As I said earlier, I'm, I'm passionate about the sport. I always have been. I played it growing up. Transferred, went to Amity for a couple of years. That was my downtime, if you will, right? But then I continue to play in my young adult level as well. So I love the sport, is what I'm trying to say. So I'm, when I, when I'm approaching you guys and talking here, I'm really looking out for the best interest of the sport. Okay? And I don't think, we have a very good process going currently with the designation of field time that we have for that field. We have a growing program and we're happy to share the fields, but the lack of organization involved in it. We've tried to have a couple of board meetings prior to this where both organizations have met. And there's a lot of mystery involved in terms of, you know, what field time we're going to be able to obtain versus the field time that they designate. So the girls' program has been in charge of really kind of scheduling and coordinating our field time for the program. And we get the field about three times a week. And the rest of the days are consumed by their program. And we've tried to kind of coordinate it a little bit, maybe get another day, or even try to coordinate things. Maybe perhaps we could do a jamboree for younger kids or just work within. And the lines of communication don't seem to be very open. Another concern I had with it was the condition of the fields. I, out of my own pocket, went to Home Depot and left my kids at a practice. I had another coach, don't get me wrong, but left my kids, went and bought bags of topsoil and brought them back to the field so I could put them in the crease. So my goalie didn't have to be on top of gravel and glass. There was actually shards of glass in it. Now, obviously, the fields themselves, I, I cannot reiterate enough, we're grateful for. And we really enjoy them and they're beautiful. But they are not being maintained properly. And to whose fault I have, I have no idea. I'm just here to discuss and give you our perspectives and what we're seeing. I know there's also, it seems to be changing, transitioning from grass to clover. So I think that maybe it might have concerned for the town as well. Because I know, being a boy from Bethany and having to do my yard work and work with my father all these years and landscaping growing up, once you start getting some clover, it takes over quicker than the grass. And next thing you know, you'll have a clover field, not a grass field.
Got you.
So those are my concerns today.
Yeah, no, that's good. So obviously, they're, they're not new concerns, but there's, obviously, we're doing some things, so you know. I'm working with, and I see you brought it, I'm working with this committee as well as the First Selectmen. We have to have certain things that we expect because the town fields from, from our organizations, if they're going to be using town fields, we've never been really explicit in that. And we're working to do that. And that's over the next few meetings. We're going to ask for financials, tax returns. We're gonna, we're gonna be talking about other options that this, that this committee, commission might entail, what they look like, putting in and writing State of the Union. Because we pay for, we, we pay for the, all the water down there. We obviously keep up around there. The one thing we ask at Fred Wolf, and it's, there's been a concern. You look at soccer, fertilizing and keeping it up has been very consistent on the soccer side. Down on the lacrosse fields, I think during COVID or might, we missed a few. And we also have wear and tear that the, the soccer doesn't have because of our goals. And we have to have a plan for that. And so we got to think about that because we mow it. Chris sends down there, we, we mow that a lot. We, so we spend a lot of money as a town.
And line it?
Yeah, to line it, to do a lot of things.
We're appreciative for that, too.
But we have, we can't, the things we do expect from our organizations, we can't have it drop the ball and we can't have it done cheaply. It has to be done efficiently. So not saying that's what the case is, but we have to find a process that we have. Because we've never really had a process where we've held anybody accountable on that. So that's one of the things we're going to do. So, and that's, you know, listen, COVID threw a lot of things into a lot of, into a lot of disarray. And now that we're coming out of it, we're going to come out of it better with a better process. You know, that's, and I think this has all come out of the Fred Wolf overall committee that we're, you know, we're unearthing some things that we just need. We're at a different phase. You know, with the playground, with the new, with the new entrance, probably some other field access and parking options that are going to be right on. We're looking at a gazebo, probably. There's a lot of things that we're going to do down there. But we also have to maintain the fields we presently have. So we have to, it has to be yin and yang. The, the town has to, has to look, work with the organizations and vice versa.
We're happy to offer financial help to fertilize and stuff like that. We've discussed this. I was part of one of the discussions during the meeting with the Amity Girls' Program. And we just couldn't come to a, a meeting of the minds here. If we're going to split the maintenance, we should split the time. It should be even. I think that's important. I also would like to kind of reiterate, too, we, we do do things over there. John Costanzo, myself, and another gentleman, we went down there and strong, I think all six or all eight of those goals last season, and the season before. We put the nets on, we stitched them up. We had, don't get me wrong, we enjoyed ourselves out there, you know? We picked a great day, too, 28 degrees. So we were frozen by the time we got done. But, you know, that's a man for you. We just don't know how to pick those days. We don't look. We just put it on the calendar and just go and do it.
Yeah.
But with that said, like, that was another concern I had this year. Here we are, we're on the doorstep of the season. And I went and did assessment and none of those nets were taken care of. They, they used, the girls' program used them in the fall. And they threw them up in the corner and they're weathered, they're torn. You know, some of them are probably a couple of years old at this point and that's going to happen. But some of them not necessarily, shouldn't be torn. They shouldn't be weathered. It shouldn't be this situation. And I think there's two reasons. It's, we don't have storage facility down there to properly maintain our equipment. And the other problem is, when you don't chain up the nets and you don't stick them in the corner and stack them all together, people take them out and then people aren't even using them for lacrosse. I went down there and I see people kicking soccer balls into the nets. So our nets are getting ripped by random people and, and it's unfortunate. But we've been trying to kind of come together. And I think it's important that the two organizations work together on this cause. So it's probably, maybe perhaps the town can get involved in this respect, the Park and Rec community, and be a mediator between the two organizations for us to do things fairly. Because I, like I said, I have a vested interest in the girls' organization as well. But I just think we should.
I agree.
We need a better meeting.
Yeah, we, maybe we got to come together. So we, and we could talk about this after. And how Park and Rec Commission can help.
That'd be wonderful.
That, that would be, that would be the first case. I think it's the model we did years ago. We bought a storage unit. We would be, we would be open to that being stored down there so that the nets stay, just like what goes on a peace road. That was actually the, I was part of the boys when we bought that. And then we just left it there. So that would probably be my recommendation is, yeah, in the fall, you put them in that storage bin in the back of the parking lot. We got plenty of space down there. And then we go from there. But that's, yeah. I, I think the first thing we got to, we got to figure out is field usage in the spring. That's obviously the, the number one priority. I've, I was part of, and then some conversation of that, but obviously it's not sticking. So we gotta, we gotta get back to the drawing board. We'll, we'll do that. So we, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Questions? Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
What ages are your programs?
We are from kindergarten to eighth grade.
All right. All right. Bethany, Orange, and Woodbridge, right?
Yes. Yep. We do Bethany, Orange, Woodbridge. And we actually use fields in all the communities right now, currently. We do our preseason. They're not very good fields, but they're better than nothing over at the Bethany Airport. They're not very level, but we're very appreciative that the Bethany Parks and Recs allows us to use those fields. And we see we use those between two to four weeks in the beginning of the year. And the rest of the season, we split our space between Peace Field and Fred Wolf.
All right. There's a field that's not being used at Fred Wolf Park. Maybe you can approach this commission to use it.
Yeah.
On the right.
So on the right, that's the, that's being fenced, the one that's newly fenced on that right.
Yes.
Has not been designated or taken by any organization.
Yeah.
It's a full-size field that's been, it, it's beaut, it looks gorgeous.
What's the dimensions, Chris? I, I don't know.
Look, it'll fit. Forgot the length of the lacrosse field.
110 by 60.
Really?
Yeah.
But.
Yards.
Oh, I was going to say.
Sorry. 110 yards. No, no, 110 yards.
That makes more sense.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, it's, it'll.
Right? Is that correct, John?
Yeah, that's 100%. But you, at the youth, you don't have to have a full, full field.
Correct.
You could go anywhere from 80.
For younger kids?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Especially the, because the, the younger kids go halfway. They go from side to side. So we can get you the dimensions.
Yeah, we did that a couple of years ago. We went, we cut the fields in half.
But you guys should approach us to maybe use those fields.
Thank you. I wasn't aware of those. The, I, I saw, and that's when you walk in, when you, when you drive in and the fields are on your left, and they're to the right, right there.
To the right, yeah, with that new fence right there.
Yeah.
I got a text from Jim. He said it was 280 by 350. How convenient.
So, thank you.
Great. Okay.
So, yeah, so I.
I mean, that's an option.
How do I go about doing that?
Call to Dan.
Okay.
Call Dan in the office. I think right now there hasn't been any requests, I don't think. I mean, Dan would.
I don't know, neither.
Neither do I know.
Okay.
I mean, you know, talk to him.
That's available every night, right now, every night. So.
Great.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be those two. And actually, that location is better located for parking, access, and everything than that far, far back one that you guys usually get.
Sure.
So that could be a home run for you for right now. And then we, but we still have to, we, we have to listen. This is, as a lacrosse guy, we have to come together as a boys and girls. In this most successful towns that have youth programs, the boys and girls clubs have their own executive boards, but then they also have a joint executive board. Madison, Cheshire, Guilford, where they obviously have boys-centered executive teams and girls-centered. But then they have people that sit on the, on the, and the master execs, so that would oversee that. So then there wouldn't be the scheduling. Same thing that goes on at, at Old Tavern. They have the softball board, they have the baseball, hardball board, but then they have the executive board.
I think that's.
It's the way it should be run. Yeah, it's the way it should be run. And those are the discussions about the parameters of the town. And, you know, I, like I said, I've gotten, you know, we've talked with Mr. Zoli. We've talked to Attorney Marino, you know, Attorney, you know, the First Selectmen has got him involved. So we're working through the process. We'll slowly, we'll get there. I just don't know what it will look like right now. But we, we understand that we need some growth and development on that. So we're there.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, no problem. Any other questions? That was a great question, Steve. Thank you. And great suggestion right out of the gate.
Yeah, I mean, that will, should work.
Yeah.
You know?
I appreciate it.
Good. Okay. Stephon, thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Oh, no, thank you. This is, thank you for all that you do. Okay, so that's, I always, that's my, always my favorite time, especially with lacrosse. And it's super great to have our organizations in here and have them have the exposure to the public. So thank you. You guys don't need to stay if you don't want. Thank you. Get home to your families. So we have, right now, we did the minutes. Old business. Any questions? Yeah, thank you, guys. Thank you, thank you. Any questions that we, that we might have for Chris to bring back to Dan that are looming? Maybe that, Chris, you could, you could talk to Dan when he gets back about that field. And just give him a heads up that it's going to be coming, probably?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's, I think it's available.
Yeah, I think.
Or anything. I have no plan to paint it or anything, so that would be something that would be coming up soon.
Yeah, so that would be time. He's just making you feel, making me feel good because I, I do it about three times every meeting.
I do it, too.
Yeah. It's part of us. It wouldn't be a Park and Rec meeting if I wasn't talking like my mom. I get it from PJ Shanley all the time. No, there's no sound. I said, it's probably me. Let's go to new business, grounds and facilities. So actually, that's probably the best part for Mr. Smalls to, to give us an update. And as well with Mr. Bessbuda, he could, you guys could do the dual update.
Well, the playground's being worked on for probably two weeks, Chris?
Yeah, it's right around there. They're, I, I don't know about halfway done, but they had a whole new section. There was a big section and there was a hover section.
It's looking good. And south of the playground, they're building a parking lot. They stripped the loom and brought in processed for a parking lot.
Awesome.
So that's, will be good. And there's plans for a fence, you know, around the playground when it's, you know, all done.
That's beautiful. No, we're in good shape.
You know what? I don't know when your guys are going to come back.
As of right now, I'm waiting till the end of this week to see if they come back next week.
Okay.
I don't want to bring them back if it's going to be rainy and cold like the next two days. So it's kind of, it's slow enough where we're not chasing anything right now.
Yeah.
In terms of everything else, this Saturday, we have the Amity Jamboree on the two big fields. That's probably not going to happen. And I don't know if there's a rain date, maybe Sunday. So I went through them today. I haven't lined them and chalked them, but they're prepped up and ready to go. I'm hoping to get them a little bit of water on them because it was so dry today. I was dusty as all after doing the raking. So once that, once I talk to them tomorrow, basically, we'll probably make a decision, I would imagine. I hope they do, just because I don't like prepping fields for no reason. So I hope they get out there, but we'll see about that. We were talking earlier, I repainted the corners of the lacrosse field. We shifted them. I think the upper field, I did about 30 feet forward, call it forward, whatever, towards the parking lot. The lower field, 30 feet to the right. So those worn out areas will be outside of the main crease. They're not gone, but I had talked to Justin. He had mentioned about going, Justin Grandy, about going over there and topsoil and seeding it and trying to at least get it level. It's so hard to repair those lacrosse fields.
During the season?
Yeah.
So one of the things we talked about, thank you, Chris, one of the things we talked about, and we'll have to get in the next couple of months, we're getting through the present season, but it's going to be imperative, at least the boys and girls lacrosse teams, we're going to give very tight guidelines of usage this summer and this fall. Because we really need to really attack those fields, reseed, attack the fields. And we got to come up with as a group, we have to, with Chris's guidance, obviously, we'll trust Chris. But we got, we have, rest is the only way to cure it, with the right work.
Rest is really hard to come by because most seasons go so late. I mean, all of our sports go right into the last day of winter, I mean, fall, it seems like. But that is what he was talking about earlier, locking up the goals. Because I know with Tom, he locks up his goals. He also tells me, do not paint at a certain time. He wants the last lines to be nice for soccer, but after that, make sure I never touch them so they disappear, so people don't have a crease to go play in if they get a goal out. It's just something that kind of wears away and it's harder to go see where you're going to go make a mess.
Tom does a great job. He's a good model for how to manage the fields over time.
Yeah, that's, we have the, we have precedent with it. Because Little League's been the same situation. They paid for fertilization. They have their upkeep budget. Same with soccer. They have their fertilization and their upkeep budget. So we, hopefully, we have something to look at and we can do it because it's been frustrating.
Yeah, yeah. And we're going to get it. And those, and, and there is nothing like taking care of lacrosse creases, both boys and girls, because they become really, really difficult to, yeah, used and difficult to maintain.
It's got to be one of the hardest, worn out areas in of, what, a six-foot wide goal mouth. It's, it's.
So this moving it around is a, is a good, a good addition. And I, I think it's what we, what's, what's needed right now. But we definitely have to have long-term plans. What about the rest of the town, Chris? Any, any thoughts, updates?
Which, I mean, we're coming out of our doldrums, our lack of winter doldrums this year in terms of maintaining the machines. I'm just finishing them now because I have all winter to do it. And Bob's been out picking up sticks, but every day there's more sticks. It's, it was.
Yeah, it's been crazy.
It's been a, it's been a very interesting winter. I think we had all of four inches of snow total. But whatever, it's, it's out of here. The grass is starting to pop. All the flowers are popping. This area right out here is covered in daffodils, ready to go. So we're ready. But as soon as my guys get back, we'll be out, you know, making it look as pretty as it gets.
When, when do you bring your new, your seasonals back?
So they may start next Monday, but I will make that decision on Friday once I can kind of see a longer range forecast. Because no sports officially start. Once our jamboree is done and next week I have to paint lacrosse, there's not really a huge pressure on right now. So I don't want to bring them back if it's questionable.
Too soon.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially with.
Permits or don't?
Yeah, they go the April 4th, I think Dan was saying, because April 3rd is the first day of registration and their new rec track, a rec desk thing. So he's like, we're not answering the phone that day. So whoever's in Little League watching this, please don't call on the 3rd. Call on the 4th to rent the.
So the 4th is the permits, yeah.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah, because then that way you can actually, you know, like, I was on almost all the fields today with the Harley rake, trying to get rid of the weeds and flatten it out before the rain, just to make it a little bit more presentable. Almost all the fields today with the Harley rake, trying to get rid of the weeds and flatten it out before the rain, um, just to make it a little bit more presentable.
Thank you.
Does, uh, Dan give up the permits for all the fields or no?
Just, just the practice fields for baseball. We don't touch anything else.
Okay.
Uh, actually, sorry, soccer at Peck. That's the other one.
Soccer, Peck and, and anything also that goes on up at High Plains.
All right.
He manages.
All right, so they don't do orange soccer or lacrosse at Fred Wolf? All right.
So the three major locations, the individual organizations, and that's what I was saying that we're. Because we allow them to manage those fields themselves, the also the in-kind and, and field maintenance. You know, we take care of the bulk of things, Chris and his crew.
Yeah.
But there, there are things that we have in expectation, but I don't think we've ever put it in writing.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that's where we're talking about.
Important to discuss.
Yeah. And I don't know where we'll get, but I'll get some thoughts. So what Jim's, uh, thought was is that we, that Dana and I pen, pen a letter. Um, we'll do that next month and then, um, we will come to this committee before it's sent out, this commission. And then we'll send it out with any feedback or edits or anything. So, okay, uh, personnel, obviously he gave a great update there with Chris, cause that's the seasonal people and the. I know, uh, the other way is sees, they're looking at seasonal for the summer camps. Uh, budget, why don't we just take a look at the budget if anybody has any thoughts? Or questions, we can have Chris bring them back to Dan, but we give it our cursory. He's. Dan's gotten really good at this. They stay within budget. They know not to overspend. We never hit our marks in, uh, in revenue of what the Board of Finance asks. I don't think we've ever in the twenty years I've been here that we've hit that mark, but we try to do our best. And with the fitness, uh, facility back open, we probably will have some additional dollars there. So director's report, Mr. Director, are you ready?
Ooh, look at me. I'll just read this verbatim.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not a good paraphraser. Uh, registration for the spring twenty twenty-three programs, swim lessons and summer day camp will begin Monday, April third, twenty twenty-three for Orange residents. We'll be going live with our new recreation software, Rec Desk. This software will have an online registration capabilities as well as in-person registration. We are very excited about this new software for our department and for the town, and we all are. I know that for a fact. So on the parks side of it, uh, yeah, so it's basically the same thing. They're gonna, it's, could be Monday, April third. It could be the next week if the weather cooperates. Uh, in terms of programs, uh, the youth basketball league concluded its season on Saturday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Thank you to all our staff. Volunteer coaches, parents and players for all they did for the program and contributing to the success of it. I was part of that on two teams and it was a great season.
I saw pictures.
Yes, we didn't win, but it's fine, it's fine. I'm not bitter. I know next year to draft a team that has older kids on it for my older kids, cause of, you know, when they turn twelve and thirteen, they get a lot bigger. I drafted all eleven year olds. We'll be running our men's softball league again this year. All information went out to the team representatives last week. We are planning to start the season the first week of May in twenty twenty-three. The spring twenty twenty-three program information is available at the Park and Rec office and online at www dot orange dash C T dot gov. Spring registration for land-based programs, swim lessons and summer day camp will begin Monday, April third, twenty twenty-three for Orange register, uh, Orange residents. We'll be going live with our new recreation software, once again, the Rec Desk. The April Vacation Camp will be held Monday, April tenth, twenty twenty-three through Friday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Vacation camp is full and the fitness room is open Monday through Friday, eight AM to six PM.
Beautiful.
I will also answer any questions you have.
Any questions so far? He has one last, I did, did you, the aquatic, we also have an aquatic report in there? I could be, I got that. Lessons for session five begin on February twenty-second. Uh, the winter weather has been very favorable to keeping lessons running smoothly and we have only one cancellation. Our spring registration dates are scheduled to begin April third. We're going to attempt to use the online registration system for the first time. Sue, Sue's always on top of it. The new lifeguard training class is starting March twenty-seventh and will finish the beginning of May. The new guards will be done in time to find summer employment. This will be the last class this spring until September. So hopefully we'll be able to fill all, cause that was been one of the questions of space and down with lifeguards. Hopefully this will be able to fill. So Chris, we also get the opportunity to thank you for taking time away from your family. But we also thank you for all that you do for the town and you and your crew. It's, it's exceptional beyond belief. We're really spoiled, um, as a small town and you do an exceptional job. And it's, it's probably even more difficult as a parent. I will, that's one of the reasons I never moved to Branford, cause I don't want to be a principal in the, in the town that I live. You live it every day of being, uh, you know, our su, our supervisor and working in those programs while your kids are playing and. You get the full, full benefit of it, but also you probably always hear.
I kind of like it. It's like a power trip, cause people bother me. I'm like, oh, I'm sorry, I can't get to your field. The town is way more important. I've never had to use that, but I've mentioned it to people.
It, it's in your back pocket. There you go. But then we just want, as a commission, and I'm sure it's echoed by everybody here. How lucky we are to have you and your staff here. And, you know, you guys do just a great job. It makes this town special place. Yeah. I gotta, I gotta technically, so don't, Deb, Deb, I got a technical years ago and I lost. In the first round of Deb out coached me and I got a technical and, 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 and I, you know, because I was a sore loser. So don't worry about it.
Uh, yeah, we lost because we had a travel game immediately following. I benched my two sons in the second quarter and they're like, why? I'm like, cause we have another game following this, but the guy who beat us won the championship. Shout out to Doolie, good job.
And so did Deb. So there you go. That's, I, you know, that's, that's, it's, it's karma. I should not have gotten the technical and she was doing. And that's why she's a better coach than me. So it's easy. So, uh, any comments from the commission members? This, we can have these kind of meetings any, any month. I love these. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn? That's a second, Deb? All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, Chris, again.